I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the rule of law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, August 26th. The time is 7:05 PM. And we will ask Clerk Wade if she will please call the roll.
Yes.
Jo Buggatum?
President.
Jody Hollingshead?
President.
Wheezy Michael?
President.
Jenny Saline?
Here.
Mark Downs?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Trumbull?
Here. The first matter of business is approval of our minutes. We had the August 12th, 2025, special meeting minutes, and August 12th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. Those were circulated by Clerk Wade. Did everyone have a chance to review? Any corrections, additions? Approved by consensus? Okay. We have a few items of correspondence on tonight's agenda. The first item is Community Spotlight: Going Above and Beyond. Morgantown Police Lieutenant Jason Ammons.
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant and Chief and Deputy Chief, if you don't mind coming forward. Just have a couple of brief comments to make, and I'm so pleased to be able to make this recognition today. So to provide a brief summary, we're here to do some recognition to Lieutenant Ammons for going above and beyond in providing service recently. Over the summer, there was a mobile home stuck at the intersection of Scott Avenue and Grafton Road, and Lieutenant Ammons had put in a lot of hours and work towards coordinating resources, coordinating funds, in order to be able to move and get that mobile home moved. So this was a mobile home that was donated to a family who had lost their existing home to a fire, and it was being transported to a new location, and it was stuck on the side of the road. And the reason that it's important for us to highlight is we know our officers truly provide such great community service to our residents every day, and they are there to serve and they are there to protect. But there are moments where our employees truly go above and beyond that may not be in the normal scope or seen as their normal duty and what they do day in and day out. So we really want to recognize that gets to the heart of a true public servant. And those are things that you can't train for. It's just true to the character. So we see those things, and we want to recognize those things. So we wanted to bring Lieutenant Ammons in today and recognize him for the work that he put forward. He certainly did some successful efforts in the collaboration with numerous people throughout the community to make this happen. So we wanted to thank you for your time and your efforts, and certainly give Chief a few moments to say any words, but we wanted to bring you here today and thank you for everything that you've done for our community.
Thank you. Thank you. One, two, three. Three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, if you'd like to share a couple of words for us, and then Lieutenant Happy, if you'd like to say anything. You don't have to. You don't have to, though, if you don't mind.
So one morning, I come into the office. It's relatively early, as early as I can be at the office. And I walked into Lieutenant Ammons's office, and he goes, "Chief, do you know about this mobile home that's been stuck up here by Scott Avenue, up on the Grafton Road?" And I said, "Yeah, I think I might have heard something about it." I don't get up that way very often, so I wasn't too familiar. And then he sort of filled me in on the details of the circumstances, the family losing their home, and this home was donated, and I guess that some kind of... had some difficulty maneuvering and got stuck in a ditch, and had been stuck there for quite a while. And he asked me, he said, "Do you mind if I try to solve this problem?" And I said, "Sure, go ahead, definitely. Do what you can. I'll support you in whatever you do." So he proceeded to work the next several days, I think, two or three days. It took a little while to make the contacts that he needed to make with the numerous people that Jason knows. He seems to know everybody. And through the efforts of him coordinating and getting the right people involved, that home was successfully moved and hopefully found its way to where it needed to be eventually. I don't think it did right away, but at least it was put in a place that was a little more accessible and easier to get to. And he wouldn't call that necessarily. I don't think Jason would consider that working too much above and beyond what he's normally called to do, but I think everybody else does. And I think I certainly appreciated it, and I think it definitely is worthy of recognition, especially on the lines of just demonstrating that engagement and that care for the community, and really what a police officer should exemplify, working within the job, going that extra mile and making that extra effort to help people in need. I think that's what being a police officer is about, and congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
I do want to say thank you. I was very humbled to find that I was getting an achievement award. It was one of those things where you just drive by and you kept seeing it. Of course, I have a Facebook. I use it. I saw all the comments, and they're funny, and they're not funny, and somebody said that everybody knew the story. So I just reached out to the lady and said, "Call me. Tell me the story." And just so happened, as Chief Powell said, I do know at least some of my own people, and the moving company, him and I are buddies. We race together. He said, "Man, if you can give me some money just for my equipment," he goes, "I'll come move it free as far as the business goes. No problem." The announcer at the racetrack where it's at says, "Hey, I'll do the GoFundMe." So they did the GoFundMe. Michael got the charging-at-you transport, got it moved. It's actually not really far from where it was, but that's where we were told to take it to, because that gentleman was given permission to put it on that piece of property. It's privately owned property up next to the Postal Plaza. I waited a little while to make sure no other bills came in or something, that somebody had a fine or a fee or something for it. And about a month after I went up and handed the gentleman the, it's like $2,300 or $2,500, $2,800, whatever the total ended up being, and he was so appreciative, because he could turn his electric on. So the money that was donated, got the trailer set, got his electric on. He was living off a generator, him and his wife. So as far as I was concerned, it was good to go. So I even donated to it. So like I said, feel really humbled for it, because we were just trying to make sure that somebody had a place to live. But I do appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may say, I really appreciate you taking the time to have done that. The fact that everybody was so willing to come help you out so quickly speaks volumes to your character, and I appreciate all the effort that you put in.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. McCallister.
Thanks. This is, just so you know, this is my wife, Brandy. She's been with me since before I was a police officer. She's been up with all of the late hours and the weekends and the holidays and text messages and phone calls. So, you know, she's really puts a lot of faith in me to do stuff, so I really appreciate her, too.
No basketball practice?
No, we have a soccer game.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority Annual Report with the Executive Director, Crystal Crusoe.
Good evening. I hope this four minutes doesn't mean that's all I have to talk.
No, no. That's the public portion, not presentations.
Thank you so much for having me. My name's Crystal Crusoe. I'm the Executive Director at the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority. We like to come about once a year to kind of bring you up to date on some things that have happened over the years. So tonight, that's what I'm here to do. Before I do that, though, I would like to recognize my Morgantown Commissioners. We have... Our bylaw states that we have two appointed from the city of Morgantown. And, you know, it's a volunteer position. They provide a lot of direction for us, help us set policies, help us weigh in, ensure that we're compliant with everything. I want to give a special shout-out to Brian McAllister. He rolled off of our board this month, and he's been with us for almost nine years. So it's going to be a big loss for us. Brian holds us to the highest of standards. He's always provided us with great leadership and insight and direction, and we're really going to miss his input, so. Nine years is a long time, too. We'll surely miss him. Also want to recognize Rachel Cohen. She's our newest board member. She's been with us just about a year. She, of course, has a great line for housing solutions. She's worked with federal programs, so she's been a really good asset for us as well. And I think y'all did some interviews tonight for Brian's MTC, so hopefully those were going well. I want to spend a few minutes just giving you a little bit of background, maybe for some of our new councilors. We are a public housing agency. That's how we're chartered. There's about 300 in the country. We manage federal programs, so we're not HUD. Everybody calls us HUD, but that's really not who we are. We're a public housing authority, a public housing agency. We have 68 years of service in affordable housing. We have the public housing program, so that's apartments that we own and operate, and that's only in Fairmont. There's 136 of those. And then we have the Section 8, or Housing Choice Voucher Program, that we provide service for in four counties, two cities. We have about 1,289 of those vouchers. I think it's important for you all to know that 60% of our vouchers that we have to our four-county area are dedicated, not dedicated, but are offered in one county. So it's a big portion of our voucher allotment. We spend $677,000 per month in rental subsidies in our four-county areas. So that's a huge amount of money that's going to the private landlord sector. We're real proud of that number. What makes us a little bit different from other housing authorities is that we have a full-cycle homeownership center also involved. So we work with families for counseling, education about homeownership, and we do some mortgages and classes and housing navigation. So that makes us a little bit of a different kind of a beast. Do you want to talk about a couple of myths that are out there? Every time I talk about my agency, people are like, "Why is there no public housing in Morgantown?" Well, there's no new public housing. There hasn't been for several years. I was really hopeful that we might be turning a curve, but right now, everything is leaning towards the low-income housing tax credit programs. So that's kind of like the new public housing. And what works out good with those is that we work with those developers to provide vouchers and to, you know, still meeting the need. So, but as far as us being able to produce public housing here, it's just not in... it's just not in the cards right now. There's also not new vouchers. So it's not that, like, you know, we have talked to you about my waiting list, but like, we don't have this go-to-HUD and say, "We need vouchers," and they give them to you. There's just not new vouchers. And when they do put out new vouchers, they're always special-purpose vouchers. So, for example, they might be for veterans or for disabled families or whatever. And we chase those. Every chance that we get, we apply, but we can't just get more because we need more, and that's really unfortunate. I thought I would raise my comments tonight, kind of along the lines of the annual report that was submitted. So I'm going to just highlight a few things. I'm going to start with the bad news. The bad news for the last year is that we were really fortunate. We were one of two agencies in West Virginia, and then the second year, we were one of one agency that received funding for Fair Housing. And so we were doing a lot of Fair Housing education and outreach. I think that we did some for staff and maybe for some of you, but that program was suspended in '24 and into '25. We also had to close our waiting list in February of 2025, and that was a really hard thing to do, because the public sees that as there's no vouchers, there's never going to be vouchers. But the truth is, that's where you're supposed to be, that you've fully expended your vouchers and that you're, you know, you're using all the money that you've been given, but it's a really hard thing to look at people and say, "We can't even open the waiting list for you." We have over 1,100, I think there's 1,105 on our waiting list, and there's no way that we can serve those. So it was the responsible thing for us to do, to close the waiting list instead of continuing to add people to the waiting list and providing like this false hope. So in addition to those 1,105, we have 151 in what's called a holding pattern. So when we do open vouchers, those will be the first families to be served. So they've already been pre-vetted. So we closed the waiting list in February, but we stopped issuing new vouchers in October. So it's been since October that we've even been able to issue a new voucher, October 24. So that's been hard. Just want to give you a few numbers. I mentioned the special-purpose vouchers. Those are kind of set aside differently from the regular vouchers. We have 57 in our emergency housing program. We have 20 in our VASH program, and we have 64 in our project-based voucher program. And then we have what I think is our best-kept secret. We now have 70 families in our family self-sufficiency program. So that just kind of shows you the extras that we're doing. So that just kind of shows you the extras that we're doing. Um, and again, we'll continue to, to chase those applications as we can. Um, the other bad news is there's been no movement on our development towards upper falling run. Just want to talk a little bit about that too. Do want to highlight some of the good stuff. Um, for the last year, both of our programs, Section Eight and public, Section Eight and public housing were rated as HUD hub performers, which is a big deal. So real proud about that. Um, we did receive, so I mentioned that there's thirty-three hundred housing authorities in the country. Uh, we were one of fifteen that was awarded some special money from Melania Trump for our fostering youth initiative program. So it was kind of a, a really nice little surprise for us. We launched a landlord repair program. So landlords are participating in our, participating in our program. If a tenant damages their unit, they can come back to us and ask for reimbursement for materials. So that's something new for this year. Um, we also became certified in HECOM. I don't know if y'all know what that is, but it's housing, um, it's home equity conversion mortgage. So it's where you have a, you have a home, you can reverse your, reverse the equity and that house payment will come to you every month. So it's a really good tool for like elderly families or families that might be struggling, but they do have a lot of equity in their house. One of only two in West Virginia to be certified in that program. Uh, we moved the, to the suite at the Spruce Center and thank you to the staff at, um, the Land Reuse Company. That's been a really good space for us. We're up there three days a week, taking appointments, seeing folks. Uh, so we have a lot more room there. We increased our family self-sufficiency program by fifty and we completed two-year strategic plan. I also wanted to talk a little bit about the challenges because there's gonna come a day when I'm gonna need you all to help me with, with a few things. I'm sure that you know, um, all of our housing programs are up, up for possible cuts or if not totally being zeroed out of the budget. So it's a really scary time for us. We're hearing about cuts, but we need to be vocal to those. And, um, I talked with Jamie about, you know, when the time comes, um, I'm hoping that you all will help us rally and talk to our local legislators and, um, talk about the importance of what these programs do. Um, that's really all we can do at this point in time, but it's important for us to share our voice. And of course, the more people that we have, the better. Um, I'm really eager and anxious to bring housing rehab programs back. They're really challenging, but if you take a look at the community around us, they're really, really needed. And, um, Councilor Selene, I know you love seeing those pictures when we would have the before and after pictures of our rehab programs and I want to bring those back to you. So, um, I think that the programs are, are difficult, but I think we can figure out a way to make them work. So that's something that I would really like to get back to the area. And then the other thing is we just need to be more creative in finding ways to make homeownership more affordable in Morgantown. Um, so we, you know, a couple of things that we, we've thought through, you know, land banking is something that I think we, we need to explore, um, getting back to some smaller homes and maybe doing some energy efficiency programs and then working with developers. So we've got a few things on our plate towards that effort, um, but we would really like to partner with you all to kind of bring that to fruition. Our future plans, we want to stay mixed up. That's again, our goal. Um, we're, we're at like ninety-nine percent in public housing, which is as close as you can get to a hundred, um, in, in HUD language. And of course, our Section Eight program is over leased. And then we're working on a Speller House project, um, in a local university. Uh, we, they did open up the fair housing program, so we reapplied for that. We'll find out in a few months if we were, um, eligible to receive funding. And then, you know, my, big on my list is doing a development plan for upper falling run. I'm sure y'all know we have some property off of seven-hundred-and-five that's, um, I need to check and see if it's still an empowerment zone, but I think it would be a good place for us to do some development, but we're, we just need some help getting the development plan started. It's really hard for us to raise that money our own. So, you know, we hope to, we, we weren't funded this year from the city, but we hope to be fun, you know, to be considered next year. And then we can go after additional funding with, you know, other funders once we have some, some start to our pot. So that will be real, real important for us. Um, I also wanted to mention, I just want to make sure that you all are aware that we, um, we participate in a, it's the Morgantown Unsheltered Case Conferencing Group. So there's a group that, of us that meet regularly every month. And we spend about an hour and fifteen minutes doing a case conference over every single person that's on our list that's currently unhoused. We have about nine providers. All of us are really dedicated to what we're doing. And every month, people come off the list. I just think it's important for you all to know that we're, we're doing that work. We've been doing it a little over a year and it's been a fabulous group to work with. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, I talked about our FSS club. So FSS is our Family Self-Sufficiency Program. So that's a program where voucher holders can be enrolled in this program. And it's their whole goal to become government's words, free of welfare. So we're working with them to encourage them to get employment, better themselves through educational programs, uh, to, you know, move up in their current job. And there's a financial incentive in there. But one thing that we did over the last year and a half is we started a club. And I just came from the, the club meeting, uh, across the street tonight. We did, um, extreme couponing. But it's been really good to see like how, how the families are kind of embracing the ability to learn, you know, making new friends and, um, really taking in the opportunity to get this, some little education program. So it's something that I'm real proud of too. Uh, we also do a lot of support with area programs. So a lot of the housing agencies that you talk to, a lot of the tax credit developers that, you know, you see their applications come through, um, or new projects that are coming in, we've been involved either in MOU with them or we've been involved with them in some level of talking about housing, you know, helping them decide on what, you know, what plans and showing them how many people are on our waiting list so they know what sizes to build. So it's just some things that you might not see behind the scenes. So that's all I've got for tonight, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Questions for?
I've really been, um, pleased whenever I've heard about, um, y'all having the Unsheltered the Case Conferencing and, and, and working together between agencies. Cause I think that the more that, especially as federal dollars get more scarce, the more that we can stretch resources and work together is great.
Yeah, we, 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 we work really hard. Everybody's really focused. The folks that come are dedicated and you'll see, I mean, there's like nine of us that are there every month and we are just really focused on, and every month, people come off the list, which is a really good feeling. So, but thank you for saying that.
So and then anything we can do to work toward some of the, uh, smaller homes or, or spaces that are sized to the groups or individuals that need them or just to make it so that people have the housing that they really need and, um, and in an environment that they can keep, maintain the housing.
Yeah. And, and one, one program I did not mention is we have what's called the Voucher to Homeownership. We call it V-HOP. Everything's an acronym in our, in our life. Uh, but the V-HOP program actually will let a voucher holder use their voucher payment for a mortgage payment. So it's an incredible program. Um, it's, it's a difficult thing to make work, but if we can get the house prices down, then maybe some of our voucher holders could use their voucher. Works, it works well with families that are on like, um, a fixed income because, you know, that you can figure out what they're gonna be making and kind of tunnel it that way. But there's, there's just not housing right now that's affordable, not only for voucher holders, but just for low modern income families. So yeah, we've got some, some work to do. We have some ideas and so I'd love to shoot them around with somebody and, um, see what we can make work.
Other questions for Crystal?
Sure. Hey, Crystal. Um, so what is, what is the limiting factor on processing the waiting list? The eleven-hundred-and-five people on the waiting list? Is it, is it vouchers or is it housing stock?
It's vouchers.
Vouchers? That's, that's what I figured, but.
One thing I didn't mention is we do have a housing navigator. And so, so let me tell you a quick story. So the floods, so our housing navigator has compiled, independently compiled a list of all of the property owners in our area.
Mm-hmm.
And it's even broken down into like how much their rent is, what's the spare footage, how many bedrooms? Do they allow pets? What's the security deposit? You know, all the things that someone would come. So, so you could come in and say, I, your, let's say your child was moving here. They were in Texas and they moved here. They don't have to be low income. I just need to find some housing. She'll sit down and create this Google document based on what they need. I need a one bedroom, no step entry where I can smoke.
Mm-hmm.
So she'll plug that in and populate a list and send that out to them. It's got all the contact information, which we think is amazing.
Yeah.
So even though we don't have the vouchers right now, we still have that opportunity. So folks can still, you know, have some housing to choose from. It might not be subsidized, but it's something that they can choose from. And so, you know, Fairmont was hit with the floods, um, ever Father's Day, we had the building that had a partial collapse. That was really hard for me because we did not have, we did not have any subsidy. We, there was, we had nothing to do. You know, we, we couldn't get them a voucher. We didn't have any emergency money, but we did have a housing navigation. So a housing navigator came in, made a complete list, called all the landlords. We circulated that list for months of getting them out, you know, having them, and then we were sitting down with folks and helping them call. So that service, even though the list is closed, is, has been really helpful to our community.
Okay. Yeah, tha- thanks. Yeah, it's, um, you know, oftentimes, you know, I, I do some work in housing, so I get reached out to all the time when, you know, someone with a voucher perhaps needs, uh, needs, is looking for a place and I don't know where to go. I haven't known where to go, but it sounds like, you know, could perhaps reach out to you all and you all could help in, in, in those cases. Right? So, uh, we just, we just were looking for a place last, last week for, for someone that had needed, you know, kind of as an emergency, a place to go.
Yeah.
They maintain a list of like voucher available that they have a Google Drive for me specifically.
Yeah. It'll, it'll say if they accept the voucher, but there's several on there that don't take the voucher or that a market rate.
Uh-huh.
So it's just, it's just a really nice tool. And, you know, we, we had to, we've got some ARPA money to fund that position and of course, ARPA money is, is gone now. So we really scrambled to try to keep that position alive because it's the perfect fit for an agency like ours to be able to have, you know, the housing vouchers and housing opportunities and then be able to match them with a landlord or property owner. So it's something we're real proud of for sure.
Yeah, cool. I'm, um, I'm also real interested in the, uh, the upper falling run property you have. How much property, how much land do you have?
Do you remember how much it was?
No.
I want to say it's twenty acres. I can't remember. It's a lot.
It's a, how much?
It's six, it's significant. Let me get back to you. Don't put that. Let me get back to you.
Yeah, that's okay.
We have a couple of.
Yeah, please, please do.
Yeah. It's, and it's, it's very topography challenged. Um, it's got a, it had some, a lot of EGRIS issues and right now.
It's West Virginia land.
Yeah. It's got, we took a developer with my predecessor. We got in a Jeep and went up, we were driving up and down on land and the developer's like, no, I'm out. So he was like, I'm not doing it, I'm not doing the project here. But, um, it's got some deed restrictions in it right now because we were planning on doing a senior development there. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done, but we really gotta have a development plan before we can go to the next.
What's, what do y'all figure the development plan costs?
Um, seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five?
Yeah. Yeah, so our plan was to raise, they asked the city for twenty-five. We were gonna ask the housing fund for, um, ten to twenty, and then we were gonna ask one of them for the remainder. But we can't, we have to have somebody in the pot first.
Somebody's gotta be first.
Somebody's gotta be first so that we can get some others. So, um, so that, that project will just sit until the next, the next funding cycle. We can't use federal dollars to fund that kind of activity.
Gotcha.
So we gotta raise the money for it.
Okay.
Yeah. So, well, I appreciate your time. I know it took a lot longer than four minutes, but.
I have, I have one other question.
Yeah.
Um, what, so say, say we have, you know, a complete breakdown or a partial breakdown, heaven forbid, of the, um, housing voucher program. Uh, what else do agencies do other places or what else could we innovate toward, um, you know, having people in groups sponsor individual voucher or have, ask some other kinds of civic or religious organizations or, or banks or see who would, on a regular basis, make a pledge to sponsor a voucher?
Yeah.
What, what else? Have you seen other places do things like that?
I have not. We actually tried.
What do we do?
I don't remember. We tried to put together a program last year where we were asking the state if they would fund a set of vouchers for us, just to give us a little.
Sure.
It's hard to, it's hard to close your waiting list. You know, you, we have, there was a boy sitting on my, on our sidewalk yesterday. I mean, it's hard to tell them like, we don't, oh, I mean, here's some cards from other places you can call that's set you up at a point with a navigator, but it's, I don't have any idea when our waiting list will be open. That's a really hard thing to say. So we asked, we went to the state and said, if we could like to figure out a way to make this work, if y'all would give us some money. And it just never, it wasn't something that they were willing to, to bite on at the time, but I think you're on to something. You know, we just need to figure it out.
Well, wasn't MRAP that?
MRAP was, um.
The state?
It was more down payment assistance and then certain amount of months that they would pay. Yeah. And that, that expires in a couple of weeks. So, yeah. I would, I would love that. I would be really excited about something like that.
What would it take for us to, um, I know there's not federal dollars for public housing. I mean, what would it take for us to have public housing outside of federal dollars?
Oh, I have no idea.
Even more money than vouchers.
I think we probably need to look at ways to get developers into Morgantown. Um, we, so they, often when they fill out the tax credit application, they have to come to a PHA and get some, some data. So we, we've talked to several of them. I know there's several, I think there's four projects that are under application right now. Um, I think encouraging them, you know, helping them with offsets might be one way, but of course, you're not gonna own and manage it.
Yeah.
It's gonna, just gonna be a more affordable housing in the area. Um, but I, I'd be happy to explore some opportunities if you would like to talk about it at some point.
Of course.
Yeah. Yeah. So, again, folks, thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Crystal.
Our final item of correspondence this evening is a presentation on the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link Project with Jim Coatsen, the Green Team Chair.
Hi.
But not on behalf of the Green Team, right?
Um, I believe there's a PowerPoint coming at you.
Should be hidden right behind you, see the M?
Take the liberty of.
Yeah, there is.
Just in case.
I will say that we invited Next Era to come and present on their project and did not hear back from them. We also, we were, we were gonna have a balanced presentation, but.
I'm going to do my best to give a balanced presentation of the pros and cons. Um.
It's important for people to know, we tried.
We'll click that bar, but if it doesn't, it may just be the Bluetooth distance. So.
We'll see what it does. Um, for those who do not know me, my name is Jim Coatsen. I currently serve as Chair of the Morgantown Green Team. I currently serve as Chair of the Morgantown Green Team. This is a volunteer advisory board for council and the city manager on various issues related to sustainability. Uh, in real life, I retired last year from West Virginia University where I taught courses on environmental impact assessment, organic crop production, uh, various other courses in the College of Agriculture. I've been involved in a wide variety of issues. Um, an expert is somebody who comes from more than fifty miles away, right? I don't qualify. Um, but another definite I heard is somebody who's spent at least ten thousand hours working on a topic. And I have probably spent that much on various energy issues over the years. So we'll try and talk about that a little bit. Um, let's see if this works. There we go. Um, the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link, MARL as its acronym goes, was first proposed several years ago and was actually part of a congressional delegation of the National Interest Electric Transmission Corridor, which was intended to provide electric service and improve transmission, especially to assist renewable energy from sources like the Midwest to the major load centers such as the East Coast. That project did not go forward, and the Department of Energy declined to advance that. But in the meantime, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, FERC, which regulates, uh, long-distance transmission, interstate transmission, especially through our regional transmission organization, PJM, which used to stand for Pennsylvania, Jersey, and Maryland, but now it's like eleven states and sixty million people, uh, identified that as a major transmission bottleneck. The issue is that for the last twenty years, demand for electricity has been more or less flat. As growth in population and business grows, improvements in efficiency have kept electricity demand nationwide more or less flat, until just about two years ago, when data centers in Virginia, um, new demand for building electrification, demand for vehicle, electric vehicles, such as mine, um, has led to a dramatic increase in electricity demand. The eastern part of PJM, which is the Atlantic Coast, does not have enough electric generation. Power plants such as in the Ohio Valley, Fort Martin, Harrison, Mitchell, and others are operating at about fifty percent or less of their capacity. And so transmission lines would help transmit some of that excess electricity to the East Coast where it is most needed. To balance, or to adjust those and calculate what's really needed, PJM develops a regional transmission expansion plan, the ARTIP, and that was approved in two thousand three. Let's see if, there we go. Um, and called for, among other things, this Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link. The portion that is generating the most concern in our area is the orange-brown section from just north of Fort Martin, a substation called Five-O-Two Junction in Green County, Pennsylvania, east across Monongalea, Preston County, western Maryland, Hampshire, and Merrill County into Virginia near the town of Gore. From there, First Energy will be building a second extension of that link across Virginia, the southern portion of Jefferson County, to a new substation called Dawes. And from there, it would serve a lot of data centers and other demand areas in northern Virginia. Uh, the purple section represents an upgrade of an existing line that American Electric Power, APCO, will be developing from the Camar Substation near Mitchell to that Five-O-Two Junction. So that entire length then would boost the ability to transmit electricity from the Ohio Valley to those data centers in the east. Oh, there we go. Um, whoops, that was one too far. It's not going backwards. Going back up too. There we go. Um, the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link was acquired as a project for a company called Next Era Energy. Next Era Energy developed a new subsidiary called Next Era Transmission that is developing this proposed five-hundred-kilovolt line. The purple lines illustrate the options that are currently under consideration. Sometime in the next month or two, Next Era will submit a formal proposal to the Western Public Service Commission, selecting some of those routes. One option would go from that endpoint, Five-O-Two Junction, north into Pennsylvania, hook up to some existing lines, avoid Monongalea and Preston County altogether. The one we think is most likely is the shortest line straight across that would cover much of our area. And there are various loops to get around various portions of that. This is not working. Ed, next slide, please. So, um, pros and cons. As Next Era would try to argue, adding these new transmission lengths will increase resiliency of the grid. If a major line were to go down, this line would help to make sure that life stayed up. Um, it also relieves that transmission bottleneck. Right now, there's just not enough capacity to go from western parts of PJM, the Ohio Valley, to the East Coast. A little mentioned advantage is that it would also open up the potential for more renewables to connect to the grid. Currently, there are about eight thousand megawatts of new solar in West Virginia alone, waiting for an interconnection agreement to the grid with the PJM folks. It is not clear how much of that eight thousand is dependent on the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link. That is something we haven't been able to find out. The downside to this project is that it does take more land. Um, both private and public plans are at risk. There are visual impacts. Very few people think that a transmission line is sleek, gorgeous, beautiful, modern, et cetera. Um, there is the potential that it would increase the use of fossil fuel power plants such as Fort Martin, Harrison, Mitchell, as well as some proposed new gas-fired power plants. The big issue for the city of Morgantown and elsewhere is the ratepayer cost. Next slide, please. So, um, a concern that I have, because I'm an environmentalist, is the impacts to public lands. Cooper's Rock, uh, if you take that northern route through Pennsylvania, that would cross the Quebec Run Wild area. It goes across wildlands in Maryland, and the eastern section would actually cross the Appalachian Trail. That involves wildlife habitat, involves recreational access, scenic impacts, and a whole variety of other potential problems. A second issue is on the heading of environmental justice. Some communities have been disproportionately impacted by the fossil fuel industry. Coal, oil, and gas drilling, pipelines, transmission lines. And it turns out that EPA had a very interesting software package called EJ Screen, which looks at those kinds of impacts from an environmental justice standpoint. It crosses five distinct census districts in West Virginia, and, uh, that includes Preston, Hampshire, and Merrill Counties, including the entire northern swath of Preston County, would be considered a disproportionately impacted community. And then finally, the big issue is the ratepayer cost. Um, the total cost of that line is expected to be around nine hundred and forty million dollars. Probably be over a billion by the time it's done. Um, under the current formula, half of the cost of that line is reimbursed through electric rates from the people who use the electricity, the big data centers, the East Coast. The other half is distributed across the entire PJM region. West Virginia's share of that is, I can't quite read that, um, comes to a hundred and eighty-four million dollars over the next forty years. So that is the electric cost that we, the ratepayers in West Virginia, will be paying. Um, next slide. That's the one I just did. Uh, on more. Okay, so, um, the big concern that I have, and the reason that I can't tell you whether I'm further in it yet, is because we just don't know enough. A lot of the critical information to make that decision is still kept confidential and is not being shared by either Next Era or any of the other major utilities. The amount of greenhouse gas impacts from new generation depends on which power plants are used. If this hooks up a whole bunch of new solar panels, that'd be great. It would reduce our greenhouse gas impacts. Um, if on the other hand, it simply expedites for the use of coal-fired power plants, then our greenhouse gas impacts would go up dramatically. The problem with this is that mapping those power flows from a source to a destination requires some fairly expensive software and proprietary information, and nobody I know has that. There is some potential that when this application goes to the Public Service Commission, intervenors might be able to access, access that information through, uh, discovery. But at this point, the public simply does not know what's going to happen and where that electricity comes from. New transmission lines tend to favor the lowest-cost providers, which currently is hydropower, solar, and wind. The reason that capacity factors for Fort Martin and Harrison are down around fifty percent is that they just can't compete with those cheaper costs of electricity. Um, so if the appropriate transmission lines are cited, it may actually reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. Another big unknown is how quickly these new data centers in demand will get built up. Um, there is a lot of people who think that data centers are going to be the big economic bubble that everybody hopes it is, and the problem with bubbles is that they pop. I saw one estimate just last week that about ninety percent of proposed data centers will probably never get built. In addition, uh, just a couple months ago, China came out with new artificial intelligence program that uses ninety-five percent electricity than our current models. Being able to predict the future of how much electricity we need is becoming increasingly difficult. The system is becoming increasingly chaotic. And so the question is whether we, the ratepayers, should be bearing the costs or the risk of investing billions of dollars into something that may actually end up being a stranded cost and not necessary. Last slide. Um, my bottom line. I tend to believe that climate change is the single most important issue facing humanity, that we will be dealing with this for the rest of our lives. And if you call an old Texas grandmother, Molly Ivins, who had what she called the first rule of holes. If you find yourself stuck in a hole, stop digging. And we are emitting too many greenhouse gases. We should not be expanding that industry. It is the most important issue facing us. It's one that nobody wants to talk about, especially here in West Virginia. If the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link were to actually support the use of renewables that would replace these fossil fuel plants, I would support it. If on the other hand, it promotes the use of existing fossil fuel energy, then from a greenhouse gas standpoint, we should oppose that. Regardless of which side of that debate you're on, I believe that the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link has to offset its impacts to disadvantaged communities. There are people who have already faced too many impacts from the coal and gas industry. There are farmers in Preston County that already have two major transmission lines across their land. This one would box them in with transmission on both sides of their house. Um, we should avoid public lands, if at all possible. I don't want to go through Cooper's Rock. The downside is that if it avoids public lands, it will impact more private landowners. It has to assess the cost to ratepayers fairly. So, um, the difficulty we have is that none of this information is in the current proposal. And my ask for you tonight is to look at a final proposal when it comes out, and I'll be certainly looking through that at the fine tooth comb. And the city may want to engage with the Public Service Commission when that rate case comes up. That'll be the chance to learn some of the facts as to what its impacts would truly be. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Does anyone have any questions for Jim?
Thank you, Chair of the Senate.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
When they were looking at extra capacity and determining that there was extra capacity to be had, more electricity to be had, were they mainly looking at the existing power plants to determine that? Because that's what you're saying, is that the existing power plants is where there is the capacity on its face, easy to measure, versus some of the other items that wouldn't affect greenhouse gases as much like, uh, hydro, solar, and wind. So they were not assessing, when they're determining that it'd be great to have a transmission line, they were not assessing the possible increase in capacity of renewables. They were more looking at the capacity of the power plants. Is that true?
PJM's model is based on existing generation resources. They don't want to get speculative about what new plants might be proposed. For example, Longview, five years ago, proposed a new gas-fired power plant. They got all their permits, they never got any financing. So that plant has never been built, and it's the, probably improved to assume that everything that's proposed would eventually get built, because it probably won't be.
So there's the issue of the power plants and the emissions and what happens. And then there's the issue of the transmission lines, and it seems as though a lot of people are irritated. And, and you talked about, uh, the unfairness of going across properties that have already been heavily impacted. So it's sort of like the issues of the power plants, but then the issues of the transmission lines, like it's sort of this double-edged problem with not much benefit to West Virginians.
Um, at this point, that hundred and eighty-four million dollars that West Virginia ratepayers would be paying...
What do we get for that?
We get some increased resiliency in the grid. But there would not be any customers in West Virginia being served because there's not a substation to take this five-hundred-thousand-volt line and put it down to the hundred and ten volts that we need to use.
So it's only to take the energy out somewhere else?
The goal is to take it elsewhere.
Take it out of West Virginia and give it to Virginia.
Right.
Is it going to Virginia, correct?
Uh, the line ends in Virginia.
Yeah.
The grid is a very complex mesh, and so where the electricity actually ends up is sometimes a little bit difficult to predict. But we can look at where power flows based on where the generation is and where the demand is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Jim, one, one more, one more, if you don't mind. Um, how, have you seen any estimates for how long this project would take to construct?
Um, Next Era is proposing to have it in service by 2029. So they're looking at about another four years.
Wow, okay.
Um, realistically, it'd be sometime over the end of this year into early next year before they get the approval from the various public service commissions in each state. And they have to acquire it right of way. Uh, it'll be at least two years before they start construction, and probably another two years before it actually becomes in service.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. We always appreciate you being willing to share your expertise with us.
Thank you, Jim.
And it is worth mentioning that we do intend to share our recent resolution with the governor and the Public Service Commission so that when that goes before the PSC, they are, they are aware of our position. Um, that was our last item of correspondence. Our next matter of business is a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing a supplemental agreement to real estate contract number DTFAE-A dash zero-six dash L dash zero-zero-zero-six-four with the Federal Aviation Administration. We will open the public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on this topic and this topic alone, now is your time. Seeing none, we will close that public hearing and move on to our unfinished business, the first item of which is consideration of approval of the second reading of an ordinance authorizing a supplemental agreement to real estate contract number DTFAE-A dash zero-six dash L dash zero-zero-zero-six-four with the Federal Aviation Administration. The first reading was on August twelfth.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As mentioned, this item was fully presented on August twelfth, as well as briefly discussed at the July committee of the whole meeting. Uh, this is the extension for a twenty-year period with an agreement with FAA that allows for, there is navigational equipment that the FAA provides as well as maintained, uh, but it is on airport property. So this agreement is allowing that extension for that to continue.
Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve.
Jinx second.
Thank you.
Or he can have a personal take, so, either one.
Clerk Wade will sort that out, I'm sure. Uh, is there any additional discussion on this item? Any questions anyone has remaining? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call a roll.
Yes. Joe Bugan?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Ginny Celine?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes seven-zero. Brings us to our second item of unfinished business, boards and commissions. I believe we have a number of appointments to make this evening. Would we like to start at one end and work our way?
Sure. I would like to nominate Ed Hayden to the Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Is there a second?
Second.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
You didn't have an additional one, correct? Counselor Michael?
Um, I'd like to nominate Jan LeVrier to the Awards and Boundaries Commission.
Second.
By consensus? Yes. All right.
And I also have one more. I'd like to nominate to our Health and Wellness Committee, Amari Chi Umbad.
Second.
Thank you. Consensus?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Counselor Slade?
It's my honor to nominate Amy Nagle to the Fairmont-Morgantown Housing Authority.
Second.
Thank you. By consensus?
Yes.
You have no additional?
Nope.
Counselor Downs?
I'd like to nominate Michael Allen to the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Second.
Thank you. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate John Trumbull to the Awards and Boundaries Commission.
Second.
Yep. Consensus? I will abstain. Those were your two. Okay. Deputy Mayor Butcher?
I'd like to nominate Trevor Lloyd to the...
I'd like to nominate Trevor Lloyd to the Fire Code Board of Appeals.
Second.
Consensus?
Yes.
All right. And I'd also like to nominate Alice Meehan to the Ward and Boundaries Commission.
Second.
Okay. By consensus? Great. Did we miss any? That was the list that I had. All right. We will then move on to our public portion, subject to rules established by council. There is a sign up list we will start with. You certainly did not have to sign up ahead of time in order to speak. We do ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you are given four minutes. The first person signed on the list is Ethan Enterline.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Ethan Enterline. I live at 5000 Station Street, apartment 1103. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the new local government liaison of the WBUSA. I'm sure most of you remember Mimi Ferguson, who served before me, and I'm basically doing her job now. And for the new council members that are in here, as I know we have a few, basically I'm, as the name suggests, a liaison between the student government and the city council, and I advocate for the needs relating to the city level of those in the student body and the student government. Just a little bit about me, I'm fairly new to the city itself. I just transferred over here from Shepherd University, which is in the eastern panhandle, so I'm still kind of learning the ropes around here, but I was fairly involved in Shepherdstown with matters over there, and I'm looking forward to continuing my efforts out here. That's all I've got, just wanted to introduce myself. If you want to reach out to me for any reason or have any questions, you can email me. My email address is, in all lowercase, ethansenterline@gmail.com. Thank you.
Could you say the last part for Ethan?
Ethan S. Enterline.
Can you spell that for us, sir?
Yeah, E-N-T-E-R-L-I-N-E. I get asked that a lot.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, too.
The next person on the list is Annie Cronin-York.
There seem to be certain inevitabilities at these meetings. I was not first thought.
Someone beat you to the sign up?
No, somebody left the top space up.
Oh.
And you wouldn't have to listen to me first. At the last meeting, I spoke, and apparently I ruffled some feathers and kerplunked some things. I heard a lot of talk about how Morgantown is putting people in jail for being homeless and for being poor. I've heard that a lot, and so I was curious, and I checked with the police department to find out what the arrest numbers were, and they were zero, and zero people accepting services, et cetera. I would have read those numbers if there were 100 arrests, I would read it if there were zero arrests. And I'm not sure why I got the FOIA request demanding to know why I did it, where I got the information, and who I was working with, who had their hand making my mouth work. I did that by my lonesome, because I heard too many rumors and thought we should set it straight. And so that was my purpose in doing it. It wasn't to speak in favor of a ban or against the ban, just to clear the air, get some effect in the room. The next thing I said was that I didn't think it was a great idea to be doing resolutions on policy matters. There are six resolutions to be had, four of them were administrative, so there are two budget and two for the airport to accept money. I think we're all in favor of letting that one go, yes, they may accept their grant money. But the two that are on policy just seemed to come out of nowhere. I was surprised by them. I did not know who sponsored them. But my thought was that if we're going to do a policy saying that the city of Morgantown stands here on this policy, that people should speak to it before we make the resolution. And so there's some discussion, and the vote was yes, that we are going to go ahead with the resolution, which is our business, your city council. It can be a surprise to nobody that Mid-Atlantic didn't, Next Era didn't accept an invitation to come speak, because we've already entered a resolution saying that we are opposed to their work, even though it's possible it won't even go through West Virginia at all, and they have not applied to the Public Service Commission for anything. On the other hand, it may well go through Morgantown, Mon County anyway, and Preston County. Nobody wants to see it, and it's questionable what benefits it will have for us. Then again, Next Era has got many wind farms and solar farms in West Virginia that they've been keeping running. I don't know if they're attached to anything, that sounds questionable right now. In short, it seems that when we move to policy resolutions, it's a good idea to have the discussion beforehand and not just put them out there and pass them. Just my thought, sharing it. My next issue. Still working on my human rights annual report, which was due June 30th. In going through the code for the Human Rights Commission, its being, its enforcement policies, there are varying numbers where one looks in the code of what it is we protect. Just on the first page, under the declaration policy, in paragraph B, there are 13 protections, paragraph C, 13 protection, paragraph D, 17 protections overlapping, so same 12, same 13, same 13, 17 adds a few on, and 12 drops a bunch. And there is no any difference in how they're being enforced, or just these are the classes we protect. I imagine this has happened because the code was assembled over many years, and as things are added and dropped, continuity was not necessarily being concerned. There's other paragraphs, there's 13 protections, a lot of paragraphs where there's 12. And then there's the anti-bullying statute, which adds nine more that are not in the human rights statute. And the anti-bullying statute is nowhere near the human rights provisions. I'm not sure what all we're supposed to be protecting for the Human Rights Commission, whether we have jurisdiction over things that the state does not protect. And there are several classes, especially the anti-bullying ordinance, and, I'm going to go over, sorry, Emily.
It's okay, I forgot to start it.
The conversion therapy ban, have protections that aren't in the others. Most protections for children go to the age of 18, but in other places, they go to 21. I would like to make this more uniform, and so as part of my writing of the annual report, I'm working on rewriting the code, just to be helpful, not to be a no at all, just to make it easier to read and more consistent, and so that future human rights commissions will have some idea what it is they're enforcing, because the words are almost the same words in different order, from paragraph to paragraph. It'd be very nice to clean it up and make it pretty, and to put all of the human rights stuff in one place. That is my thought. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
I'm Lindsay, I live in the 5th Ward. I wasn't actually going to speak about the last meeting, but I will since the Chair of the Human Rights Commission brought it up. I think that the Chair of the Human Rights Commission is a person who represents people who live in Morgantown, should indicate at meetings whether she's speaking, going forward, should indicate whether she's speaking in her personal capacity, or if she's speaking as a representative of the Human Rights Commission when she comes up and addresses councils, and she speaks at most every meeting. I think that would help to address some of the confusion that maybe arose at the last council meeting. I will say this, because I and a lot of other community volunteers work so closely with the population experiencing homelessness, just because people aren't being arrested under the article, the camping ban article of our ordinance does not mean people are not being arrested because they are stopped pursuant to the article related to the camping ban. There are plenty of people who have been stopped because of the camping ban, because they are camping or perceived to be camping, who are then swept for some kind of warrant or something, and then they are picked up and they are arrested and sent to jail, because they were stopped under the pretext of the camping ban. So just because they aren't being arrested because of the camping ban, they're being arrested and jailed, because they were now able to be stopped. Before, they would have needed some pretextual reason to stop them. Now they don't need pretext anymore, they have the camping ban, and so they're getting arrested, and then they're getting sent to jail. So no lawyer, no good lawyer worth their salt, just takes things at face value. They dig deeper, they ask a question. So I'm a good lawyer, I dig deeper. So I just wanted to address that for council, and I yelled at many of you through a Facebook post, because I was as disappointed with you all as I was the Human Rights Commissioner. So that's my ask for both you all to ask better questions, and for the Chair of the Human Rights Commission. Today, I actually only wanted to ask some questions, which were, it was great to hear from the housing authority today, just had some questions. What is council, what are, actually first, I wanted to thank some of you who are just working really hard. I see you out in the community, I see you walking downtown, I see you doing cleanups, I see you trying to make the city more beautiful and more inclusive and doing community building, and I just first wanted to say I really appreciate that, and know you guys are working hard. You've been working hard since I've lived here, and I don't want that to go unmentioned and unappreciated. Now I'll get to my questions, which are, what, if any momentum, what movement are we making on developing affordable housing? What are the concrete plans there? What are we doing about homelessness? You got your camping ban, we were assured that once we got the camping ban, we were going to get to moving on the other stuff. That was the first thing that we needed to do to start addressing root causes of homelessness, which of course means getting people into shelter, getting people into housing. Where are we on that? How are we getting more beds? I'd love to hear about those plans. I'd love to hear where we're at on the warming shelter. I've heard sort of secondarily from folks that are working with Catholic charities and with gray shelter, but I'd love to hear from folks on council, what the city is doing to support the warming shelter, since it's, you know, there's a chill in the air, it has me thinking about what folks are supposed to do this winter. I think we're predicted to have another really cold, really miserable winter this year, so I'd love for us to get out ahead of that. And then the last thing I wanted to say is that because of last council meeting, and I've asked, and I've talked to a couple of you in individual capacities, just is there a better way for us to, I don't know that the share outs at the end are like the appropriate forum, is there a better way for us to think about how council can be in dialogue with the community, be able to actually ask questions and have a conversation, be able to share these things out? Danielle, you do a great, great job with the report outs through your Facebook posts and your Instagram posts, but I wonder if there's a more way we can be in communication about like these kinds of questions and these kind of policy issues? So that's all I have for you guys, thank you so much.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
One more.
Judy Delagarza.
Hi, I'm Judy Delagarza, 6003 Woodland Bluff Road, Morgantown, 26508. And if any of you saw the paper today, you have seen that Potomac Edison has made, has sent in a letter of intent to apply for the Gore-Dubbs Goose Creek section of the Marrow Line, that is my understanding. There was some clarification, some of the Facebook posts from Karen Newman, who is quite knowledgeable in these topics on electricity, and she got clarification that they will be submitting their application around the 1st of December. This portion affects Jefferson County, which means it affects us. Once it hits West Virginia, you know, if this line goes through, then our concerns are that Next Era is going to say, oh, but we've already made this line, we have to continue on for the Marrow Line. And we are expecting the Marrow application to be submitted around October sometime. So time is of the essence for us, the clock is ticking, we need everyone and anyone who is a resident to write a letter to the governor and to the PSC. This particular route now has a docket number, so when you write to the PSC, you can include the docket number. And I do have that, I will post that on the Morgantown forum, and I can send you all an email as well. I also attached in the email I sent to you, I think yesterday or this morning, that there has been a proposal to double stack the Marrow Line. This is, this may be just a pipe dream, it was just a suggestion, along with many other suggestions that came up apparently in a meeting, but all of these suggestions are going to be discussed and voted on apparently by the end of the year. So not only would we have the Marrow Line, the 500 kilovolt, we would have another 500 kilovolt on top of that, is the suggestion. Don't know how much higher that might take, the towers, that has not been discussed. I'm a little concerned at the lack of transparency from Potomac Edison and from Next Era Energy. The people in Jefferson only had their open houses two weeks ago, that's it. They've only had two weeks to get back to Next Era or to write their legislators. And I just think that that's sort of poor planning on Next Era's part, if they're trying to get people to really understand. And I think there are a lot of people who don't understand, there are a lot of people who still don't know. Down near my area, there's some, there's a new development, and we've been getting calls about, why didn't I know about this? And we had stuffed their envelopes about the meeting that we had at UHS, but, you know, some people are busy, they don't get the paper, they don't listen to AJR, so we just need to spread the word. If any of you are so inclined, I have a petition here with me tonight, I do have a couple of handouts to give to you. It's what we call our rack card, that has some information about the Marrow Line and the Facebook group and the website, where people can get additional information. Anyway, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Looks like we are out of public, so we will close the public portion, and we have no special committee reports. Brings us to the consent agenda. Tonight, we have four items on the consent agenda, as a reminder, consent agenda is considered as one item. I will read through the items, if there is any councilperson wishing to pull anything off of the consent agenda, you may do so before consideration. Item A, consideration of approval of a resolution amending the fiscal year 2025/2026 budget revision for the Morgantown Airport Improvement Fund, revision number one. Item B, consideration of approval of an order granting vacant structure exemption for 442 Baird Street. Item C, consideration of approval of an order granting vacant structure exemption for 731 Wells Street. And item D, consideration of approval of an order granting vacant structure exemption for 304 South High Street. Is there any item anyone wishes to pull off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
May I say a prayer?
Thank you.
One second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yes.
Joe Bugon?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Celine?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes 7-0. We have one other item of new business this evening, consideration of approval of a resolution for proposed national opioid settlement.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Council. This item comes before you, is a resolution proposing to participate in a new settlement agreement that is related to a bankruptcy proceeding with Purdue Pharma, as well as the Sackler family. This is coming to us through the Office of the West Virginia Attorney General, pardon me, where West Virginia anticipates to receive approximately $53 million in payments over the next nine years. So this is a new settlement agreement, there's been previous settlement agreements reached, so this is new additional funds, but will be implemented under the current West Virginia First Memorandum of Understanding that the city elected to participate in 2022. Under that MOU, it defines the allocations that are sent directly to the city, which comprises of approximately 24 and a half percent of all settlement funds are directly allocated to communities, and it further breaks down how those communities receive it. And then 75.5% of the funds are administered through the West Virginia First Foundation, so cities, counties, municipalities, and others are able to apply for funds for, to projects to address opioid issues. So this proposed settlement would move forward under that same allocation plan, and the city could anticipate to receive approximately $65,000 over a nine-year period under that plan. So what is proposed in the resolution today are up for discussion. It's not necessarily how the MOU is structured, if that has been set forward, this would just be if we choose to participate in this new settlement. This would just be if we choose to participate in this new settlement. Certainly, if the city does not choose to participate in the settlement, the city could choose to move forward with individual litigation, but would be without the support of the state and all the other partners that have been working through this program. Ryan, I didn't know if you had anything additional you wanted to summarize there?
Thank you, Jamie. That covers it very well. This settlement in particular is part of a bankruptcy proceeding with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. So the proposed acceptance of that agreement is in connection with the plan submitted through that bankruptcy proceeding. And documents are in your packet indicating the terms the city would be by accepting this, agreeing to participate, and then voting to approve the bankruptcy plan. A threshold number of states and local subdivisions have to approve that plan in order for the settlement to go forward.
And staff is recommending participation in this plan.
That's what I was going to say. We would like to know what you would say, Stephen. Are there any other questions for the City Manager or the City Attorney? Is there a motion one way or the other? Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? I guess, how does this affect what's already in place? Does this replace that, or is this a supplementary?
This would be additional funds that we would receive on top of the other settlement agreements. So this would be more funds. We are still required to use them under the certain expenses that we can only allocate them for, but this would be provided to more funding.
It's outside of West Virginia First Foundation dollars, correct?
This would be through that MOU.
It's through that MOU, though.
Yes.
John, you got anything?
Do you have something to add to this discussion? By all means, Director Ferguson.
I'm prepared to come up to talk about it.
Great.
I'm going to do that before 3:00 this afternoon, so you won't feel like a waste of two hours.
No, no, by all means, if you're here and you have pertinent information, we are all ears.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Jamie, City Council. John Ferguson, Finance Director, fully support the decision, if you accept it, to enter into the class action National Opiate Settlement with, there's actually two of them, we'll bring another one here to you later, with Purdue and its affiliates and the Sackler family. I know that the percentage, when you talk about the MOU, and I know it was in the newspaper last week, you know, the percentage when you talk, when you look at the direct allocation that goes to municipalities, the city of Morgantown does get a smaller portion compared to others. It's not population-based. They did not release the exact specifics on how they arrived at that, and that was done by the Attorney General as part of the settlement. That's great. What really people should be focusing on, and where I get excited over it, is the West Virginia First Foundation, that allocation. Because remember, only 23% or, I'm sorry, let me make sure I'm giving you the correct numbers here.
24 and a half percent?
24 and a half percent goes directly to the local governments. 72 and a half percent goes to the West Virginia First Foundation. That's where an overwhelming majority of the funds are actually going to. And the purpose of that West Virginia First Foundation is they are overseeing the long-term evidence-based distribution of the opiate settlement dollars across the six regions within West Virginia. So what that really means, and they've actually clarified it on their website, the Attorney General's Office website even, it doesn't have to be municipalities that apply for this additional funding. Because remember, they own, let's, you know, talk in, you know, general generalities here. A quarter of the money went directly to municipalities. Three quarters of it is sitting with this newly created entity whose only purpose is to distribute that across West Virginia based on what they call evidence-based distribution. So if a nonprofit, if a 501(c)(3), let's, and I'm going to just use that as an example, let's say we have a, an organization within the city of Morgantown, they don't need to come to us and say, can we get a portion of what we received? And remember, we didn't receive a lot. They can go directly to the West Virginia First Foundation and apply themselves. So as an example, let's say they have a million-dollar need that actually is one of what we call either Schedule A or even a Schedule B-type activity where they were trying to support. They can go directly to the West Virginia First Foundation. That's their response, that's what West Virginia First Foundation is for. They don't need to come to us looking for that money, or come to us to go to them looking for it. They should go directly to them, to the West Virginia First Foundation. And I highly, highly recommend that they do that because there is a pile of money there to be distributed. And that's the part that gets me excited. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
The other thing that I did want to mention, you know, is that we did have, we have received two payments over the past two years. The total of those two payments, and I actually brought them with me, just in case anyone wanted to see them, we did receive the first payment, which was exactly $90,833.89. That check, I have a photocopy of the check, that was dated December 18th, 2023. So yeah, it's been almost two years now since we have received that. The second check that we received was in January 9th of 2025. That was $30,810.07. I know, I know, the information that was sent to you through Brad, I was on PTO last week, Brad didn't have that information, he just had from prior years, so.
It was issued by the West Virginia.
Yeah, exactly. No, 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 no. The two checks that we received was from West Virginia, the Qualified, the QSF, the Qualified Settlement Fund, not from West Virginia First. The money first goes to the Qualified Settlement Fund, then it gets distributed to West Virginia First, and then it goes 24 and whatever percent goes directly to municipalities. The, what people should be focusing on is the greater pile of money that they can apply for with West Virginia First Foundation. That's, that's the part that I get excited over. There's money there that could be spent, and we do have nonprofits within our municipality that could go for that money directly. They don't need to come to us to go to them. They should go directly, skip the middleman, go directly to them and get that when they can. So that's what I wanted to mention. And the last thing that I had is that the two payments that we did, that we have collected as part of our direct allocation, those are being allocated in our fiscal year 26 budget 100%. And you already know this, it goes 100% to the West Virginia Catholic Charities for the Gray Shelter. So 100% of what the city has collected is being allocated to that very specific need that we have in our fiscal year 26 budget. So yeah, that's all I really had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And I know that many of the nonprofits within the city of Morgantown have applied directly to the West Virginia First Foundation for some of those funds. I know through my position at Hazel's House of Hope on the Morgantown Community Resources Board, we have met with Jonathan Board, who is the Director of the West Virginia First Foundation, along with some of the agencies located at H3, such as Lawrence Wish and Aspire Services, who have been awarded funds. So we are, we are working, and we have a great representative for our region in John Dower, so hopefully we're in good hands. Any other questions or discussion? Clerk Wade?
Yes.
Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saline?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. Passes seven zero. City Managers Report.
Yes, thank you, Mayors. As a reminder, the offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st, for the upcoming recognition of Labor Day. The first home game for WBU football is this weekend, so we are very excited, want to make sure we understand that that can create some dynamics related to traffic, and staff is certainly prepared and engaged and excited to see that uptick in the, in the community. But we encourage everybody to be safe in their travels as they're out and about. We are working with the county to identify potential dates for a joint meeting. In our private, previous discussions, we are hoping to keep topics focused on areas of economic development. So some of the agenda items that have been proposed for discussion are related to the East End Village, the airport, the Wharf, South High Street, like Greymont, things of that nature that are focused on economic development. So we are looking for Russ Roderson to participate in that meeting. He is out for the next couple of weeks. So as we look to provide the county dates, I would propose that we are looking out into the end of September or October timeframe to provide some dates. The county has asked that we put dates forward, and I would propose that we consider either 5:30 before our regularly scheduled meetings and/or our committee as a whole, or the county has their normal meetings at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday. We could potentially look to offer before or after their meetings. So I think typically, we've done joint meetings that would be before our council meeting. But wanted to bring that up to you all as we start to provide those dates forward. If there are times or dates that don't work for you, would like if you guys could get in contact with Christine Marais, so that we can provide the county dates going forward. I did want to highlight briefly today that our police department responded to a false report of shots fired at WBU campus this morning through a coordinated response with the law enforcement agencies. The incident was determined to be a hoax, and we've seen as a, as a national sage that those have become more frequent, unfortunately. The reason I wanted to highlight this is certainly, it's a situation we take very seriously, and our, our law enforcement, as well as all local law enforcement, work very hard. They extensively train to be able to ensure that we can respond as quickly and most effectively as possible. And so we take these things very seriously, and certainly want to acknowledge staff's response in a very serious situation this morning. Wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. The last thing I have for you all is just recognition. We are having an employee who has served the city over 35 years, Mr. Harry Dalton, retire, and we'll be recognizing him this week. So certainly, staff and the dedication that we see from staff and longtime hired employees is something that we want to be mindful of. So if you see him, please thank him for his years of service and his continued dedication to the city. That concludes my report. Thank you.
City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to say, congratulations to Lieutenant Ammons for what he did to help this, this family. What a great achievement. And along that lines, we're having, the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding promotional exams on September 24th. So we hope to have a big turnout with promotional exams for Captain, Lieutenant, First Sergeant, and Sergeant. So looking forward to celebrating with those promotions upcoming in September. Also, be aware that we continue to accept applications for entry-level police officer. The next exam is set for October 18th. There is an online application process on the website at MorgantownWBU.gov, or you can go straight to the, to the Police Department page, and there's, right on the front page, there's a, there's a button there to apply. So if folks are interested and they would like to apply, please reach out to the Clerk's Office, and we can help them do that as quickly and efficiently as we can for them. Lastly, I just want to reach out to you all for ideas. In October, we will be celebrating Municipal Government Week, as we have in the last few years. And we try to make it a time that we can highlight the vital role of municipal services in our community and honor our employees. So we're open for ideas, as we are each year. And we appreciate your involvement. Council has been really involved in this celebration in the last few years, and we do appreciate that, so we're open for ideas. But I want to share with, with you some of the things that we have done, to include our school, our educating our, our children in our community to let them know how our city services might impact them. We've had a coloring contest. We have, we've had a If I Were a Mayor essay contest, so that's always interesting to see the responses coming back from the kids on what they feel the mayor should be doing. We, we have, we've held two touch-of-truck events at our local elementary, so we plan to do that again. Goodie bags were distributed. We, we've had mock city council meetings, and those are always fun. So we intend to do that again. And also, library read aloud with our council members, we've done that also. So we're encouraging you all to reach out to the Clerk's Office. If you have an idea, we're, we're open to that. And we also want to take that time to celebrate our employees. As City Manager Miller said, we, we have an employee who will be retiring after 35 years, and that says a lot for that employee. So we want to congratulate our employees as well for their hard work. That concludes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I've circulated to council a summary of vacant structures, laws, and procedures, and will be working with staff on some options to provide to council to look at streamlining your exemption procedure process, as well as some other potential changes to the ordinance and your procedures. This Thursday, Land Reuse Agency will be meeting. They will be looking at potential changes to their organization through the ordinance that they may recommend to council. So we'll be discussing with the agency then. And we also have various council member requested ordinances, either drafted and under review by staff or in progress of being drafted. So we'll be continuing to work on those and getting back to you. Please reach out to me with any others. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you. We move on to reports from council members. Counselor Hollingshead, would you like to go first, since you're virtual?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to attend virtually as I'm out on vacation. I'll try to breathe since it's virtual and glitchy. I'm glad that the last council meeting came up. I had planned to mention it. So thank you, Annie, and thank you, Lindsey, for coming to speak. And I just wanted to apologize for not standing up for our helpless neighbors at the last meeting. During my campaign and my citizenship in Morgantown, I have, have worked towards fair housing, and especially during the campaign and just before it, I openly opposed the camping ban, and, and I should have stood up. I should have stood up and spoke out for our helpless neighbors. So I appreciate your patience with me as I navigate this new role as a council member. Second, I wanted to note that the SPAN South Park Area Neighbors Meeting is tomorrow. It is an important meeting for SPAN as officer elections are to be held. I encourage anyone that maybe I've spoken to or other neighbors have spoken to, who are excited to breathe new life into SPAN, who are interested in reinventing and evolving SPAN into a more productive organization, to attend tomorrow if you're at all possible, if at all possible. It's at 7:00 p.m. at Eaton Park on Park Street. Again, up at Eaton Park, 7:00 p.m. on Park Street. Take a picnic blanket, take a hot tea. Apparently, it's been chilly there. It's, it's an important time for SPAN. So if you can attend that meeting, please do, as they elect new officers. Lastly, I, I just wanted to note the sexual assault allegations along the rail trail recently. I just personally want to highlight RAINN, R-A-I-N-N, as a resource for folks who may want to report any kind of sexual assault to the police but aren't sure how to do that or what to expect. There's a lot of helpful information at www.RAINN.org, as well as a hotline if you'd like to talk to someone before you report, if you choose to do so. That's all I have.
Counselor Abugon?
Sure. All right. Hold on, I have my notes here.
Hold on, my notes are here. If I can find them. Wait for it. Here. All right. Let's see. First, last time I said we had our next neighborhood meeting coming up and that date is September 22nd. And I'm not sure yet. It's supposed to be Jack Roberts Park, but based on weather, around that time is usually when we move into the M-Tech facility. On Thursday, we have the Sisters Cities, which will be meeting in the public library. And thank you to our own Brad Rippey for helping us with putting out an information piece. And we're going to be talking about highlights of the past and ongoing initiatives, including our high school student exchange with Guanajuato. I can't ever say that. As well as the art exchanges we had with Shuze and the current video project that we're working on with Shuze and the sister school connections as well. Lastly, I would like to thank our administration for helping with shutting down of Madigan Avenue for trick or treating again this year. And I look forward to organizing our parade for the kids before we kick it off. And lastly, thank you again to Officer Ammons for helping with the removal of, or not removal, incorrect term, with helping facilitate the moving of the trailer that was stuck for a few weeks. I know that was one of those tough situations where the equipment necessary was tough to organize and his efforts were much appreciated. And thank you to everybody on staff for recognizing him as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
First off, I want to welcome our new SGA president and I really look forward to working with you.
Hello, liaison.
Liaison, sorry. Liaison.
We can't elevate him quite yet.
Yeah. We could do that soon though if you'd like. So I also wanted to thank the police, the MPD, for assisting WVU as well as the Sheriff's Department this morning. It's, the teamwork is incredible for a situation like that. It takes CMS, all of our local police departments come together to make sure that the city and the students are well protected. So thank you to our first responders for that and everybody's grateful that was a hoax. So I don't really have much else today.
I've enjoyed a few times going out with Councilor Michael to work on some brush trimming. And I'm hoping that at some point soon, the area right above Creps Park, somebody or other poisoned some of the brush there, presumably the Division of Highways. Could have been an electric company, I'm not sure. I was sort of putting out feelers, but I haven't figured that out quite yet. But there are a long, a long pathesin, right before you get to the Coliseum, right above Creps Park, there are now from whoever did this, a series of dead bushes and dead small trees. And so we did quite a bit of weed eating and trimming of small items, but it's down a pitch a little bit and it's, the items that I care about for this purpose, for this fall, is to get those brushes, those bushes down. We also trimmed around the yield and stop type of signs, pedestrian signs also, at the top right by the Coliseum. And that could use more trimming, but we did some initial trimming so that people could see the traffic signs. But I know that everyone puts forth their best efforts, our city does. I know the Division of Highways does, you know, some work along those lines, maybe up to twice a year. But when someone chooses to put down poison, it would be smart if then the brush that was damaged were removed. I probably would prefer that it not just be poisoned to begin with, but anyway, now that it is poisoned, it would be really lovely if it could be removed so that we're not going along the boulevard and just seeing a series of small dead bushes and trees. Anyway, I attended a wonderful, interesting fundraiser at the MAC this weekend. It was the Bootleggers Ball. And I saw lots of familiar faces there. It was very nice and it involved some swing dancing. So Amy Loomis, who you all know is there of course, and they were showcasing some swing dancing. They had a really great swing dancing band. And they used their outdoor space right next to the Hotel Morgan and had nice outdoor area to enjoy, but they also had some crafts upstairs, some flower arranging, Japanese flower arranging upstairs. They had a photography exhibit in the basement. They had a speakeasy in the basement. They had a full range of activities, which I really appreciate and a good fundraiser. So it was very well done and just wanted to commend them on that. The boat park director applications are due September 5th. That might be something that you were going to address, but the application is available online and if you know someone who is qualified, please ask them to apply. But they're all due September 5th. And I understand that there are some are already in the hopper. I think that's enough for me for right now, but I just appreciate everyone coming out this evening and speaking and anything that we can do for transmission lines that help other states and not ours and affect our citizens and affect our communities and our utility bills without having benefit. I think we need to keep up with these issues and appreciate people coming out tonight to speak on the issue. So thank both of you. That's all. Thanks.
Like Lindsey, I appreciate, I appreciate the ways that all of you individually and collectively, in many cases, engage with the community. We all do it in various and different ways, but everyone's out there working hard and it's fun and interesting to watch from this vantage point considering, you know, I'm just a month into this. But to that end, many of us participated in finishing a massive cleanup on South High Street. I'm going to not talk too much about that and let Danielle talk about it, but it was, I'm quite aware of that. But nevertheless, it was, it was a lot of fun and it was a lot of work and I'm pretty proud of what we accomplished as a group of friends and volunteers and people that care about the community. Tomorrow, I have a meeting with the Thrash family. The Thrash family are the folks that bought the Hotel Morgan. There's a very significant 100-year anniversary, the Hotel Morgan, coming up in the next couple of months. So we are, we're talking about plans for celebration of that 100-year anniversary of the Hotel Morgan. It's a place that's important in Morgantown's history. Eleanor Roosevelt stayed there, John F. Kennedy stayed there, Harry Truman stayed there. It means a lot to the fabric of our city. We're also going to talk about the plans for them finishing their ballroom upstairs. It's about a $2 million remodel that they've been working on. And plans for, and I plan to share, take the opportunity to share with them, plans that we've put in place. We talked about a couple of times for South High Street in general, the historic post office and the potential that it holds for our community. I'm hosting or leading an opportunity tour tomorrow at 4:30. We're embarking with Main Street Morgantown. We're embarking from in front of Primanti Brothers on High Street and walking, doing a walking tour down High Street to the amphitheater where we're going to be, we're going to be meeting with, we've invited a number of real estate investors, developers, bankers, brokers, prospective business owners to talk about the developments, opportunities that exist in downtown Morgantown, be they properties for lease, properties for sale, et cetera, businesses coming and going. I think we have about 25 or so signed up, so it's pretty good, pretty good. And September 7th, South Hills is having their Neighborhood Block Party. So I'm looking forward to that. If anyone's interested in more details, let me know. I know several, I think all of council and several folks were invited. And then finally, I appreciate Ryan working so hard with me on policy and Jamie, Jamie helping to shepherd that through and getting staff comments. There's a lot in flight and a whole lot more coming. So we're, once we establish our op tempo, I'm looking forward to what we're going to get done. So just wanted to say I appreciate you both. I know we haven't, our agendas have been like from a policy standpoint the last several meetings, but more's coming.
Turnover period. Just to clarify, the opportunity tour meets at 4 o'clock?
4 o'clock. Thank you.
Just making sure my calendar is correct. 4 o'clock and then the Morgantown Area Partnership Business After Hours is at 5:30 right after.
Well, thank you. Mark, forgot to mention the most important history of the Hotel Morgan is that I used to work there. That's exciting though, that it's 100 years old. It was the first place I had in Morgantown where I had a job and I dearly loved that place and there's a lot of things to love about.
You and Amy were married?
Yeah, my wife and I, well, we had our marriage at the amphitheater, right? Like that's where we said the vows and then we did, but we did like rehearsal dinner at the Mo Mart at the top and we did the, what do you call it after you get married?
Reception?
Reception? At the ballroom when it didn't have, yeah, when it didn't have any AC, which was fun. But yeah, I love that place. So whatever, I think we still have a coffee table from one of the rooms when they were throwing it out. It's just a very important place to me. So whatever they're doing for the 100th anniversary, very interested to see.
Yeah. Let us know.
The Mayor and I stopped by and Mark joined us for one of our stops at the fire department, at the downtown fire department. We were there. It happened to be that it was Norwood folks, right? The Norwood?
The Norwood station was visiting South High.
Station was visiting South High while we were there. Quinn, my little one, got to sit in, I think, five or six fire trucks by the time we were done and see all kinds of cool stuff. And we, it happened to be while we were there, they got a call. And so that was awesome for Quinn to see too. He was talking about it all day about how they were running around. And then they happened to come back. So we also visited, me and Danielle just visited the Evansdale Fire Station. What's that one?
Northside.
Northside. Northside Fire Station. It was good to see the guys and just talk about what their day-to-day was. It's also just great, like obviously like the firefighter when we first came in at Northside, you know, didn't know who I was, but like the second we walked in, he was like, "Oh God, are you here to take a look at the fire trucks?" I was just very excited to show my little eight-year-old everything that was there. So, and it was, it was awesome how welcoming it was. So we really appreciate all their work and getting to see them and, you know, just everything they do every day. In terms of the housing situation in Morgantown, I think we're at, we've been at a crisis point for some time. I think it's especially bad now and a lot of service providers that are up on the hill at Hazel's House, I hope, and outside of that would agree. And we probably need to cobble together some kind of immediate solution now outside of the warming shelter, which we desperately need to cobble together as well. But I think that it is a short matter of time before there are situations that occur that will be very, won't be great for our community. And I think there's also a pretext that is building within the nation about what we do with communities that seem to be, as some might perceive them as, out of control. So it would be good if we as a city got a handle on them in order to avoid some bad pretexts that are happening in places like Washington DC and soon to be Chicago. I think also, long-term, the reason why I asked Crystal about public housing is I don't see a future in which we sustain or support vouchers long-term as a housing solution. I think it's, it's not been failed, but it's not a thing that, I think it's something that should be supplementing public housing, which we've stopped as a nation. And so larger communities need to be engaged in public housing, but communities like ours need to be engaged in it as well. It's an economic driver. You know, it returns. I was like pulling this up while we were talking about it, but like there was a Pennsylvania study that every 10 million invested in affordable housing construction, you're getting a return of 19.6 and 110 jobs. So we need to look at it as an economic driver just as we invest millions of dollars in this county. In other projects, we need to be investing in things like public and subsidized housing. And then finally, you know, I think that we're building out and thinking about ways that we can kind of retool the way our committee as a whole works. I hope that that can more engage the public. I think there's also like other creative ideas that we can engage in. But I encourage people to treat these meetings as public forums as they're intended to be. I say that based on conversations that have happened recently, but also I've seen increasing bodies like ours, city councils across the state that are enclosing their public comment. In my hometown of Beckley, they have restricted their public comment in their most recent meeting. So we should be thinking about ways to be more open and creative about how we bring in public comment and try to, I guess, encourage our cities across West Virginia to engage more with the public and show them like how this can be helpful and a viable thing and healthy for discourse in communities. And that's all I have to report. Thank you.
My notes are a mess. Yeah, to follow up on Deputy Mayor Butcher's statements, he and I have been brainstorming some office hours, ideas, ways that we can get out and engage with the public more meaningfully. Not that this is not meaningful, but we don't end up with a back and forth dialogue. We, it's hard to have a conversation in this type of forum. So ways that we can... It's hard to have a conversation in this type of forum, so ways that we can do that is definitely on the radar, and after I get back in a week or two, hopefully, we can get a couple of those on the books, because I do think it's important. The number of folks that we have in need in the community, in need of housing in the community, and the number of beds and housing units that we have available is just not lining up, certainly. We always think we're ahead of the game on winter warming shelter, and this year, we got Catholic Charities to plan ahead, and they applied during our regular funding cycle and the county's regular funding cycle, and we did set aside monies for those. But I have been having a lot of meetings at H3 with the executive director of Catholic Charities, and their future plans for operations and current operations even. I had a meeting yesterday, I have another meeting tomorrow, and they, their intention is not necessarily that the space, the old Hope Hill Sobering Center space where warming shelter was last year, is likely not to be used for that this year. They have other plans for that space for a longer-term kind of tiered shelter. So here we are, back to maybe not square one, maybe like 1.5, without a location for the warming shelter. We will certainly see, and these are questions and conversations that I will continue tomorrow, when yesterday, it was kind of some of the MCR board members and a lot of the service providers at H3 met with the director of Catholic Charities, and tomorrow, I think it's a more targeted meeting between some of the additional MCR board members and contracted staff with, with the director of Catholic Charities and the shelter director. So hopefully, we get some, a better idea of future plans out of these meetings, but right now, I'm not sure where the warming shelter is going to be, which is not a good place to be in at the beginning of September, certainly. This does bring up, the questions that were raised during the public portion does bring up in my mind, if we could get, I know that I have certainly asked about it a few times recently, but when the camping ban was passed, council did pass a resolution asking staff to perform a housing study within six months, and we certainly understand that with the changeover in management, that there was a bit of a delay in that, but I would like to see the update on that. It has been 10 months now, and it's certainly something that's needed. That was something that said, you know, we're doing this housing study, and then we can kind of form policy after that, but we still have not seen that. So if we could get an update on that at a future meeting, that would be really fantastic. As Counselor Downs pointed out, we did a very large cleanup over the weekend, and we're grateful to the city for always assisting with some supplies, and we filled another city dump truck with trash from under the South High Street Bridge. I don't know if we're completely done, but I'm calling it done, because we have other projects that we have on the docket that we want to do. But we did, we ended up with another climber this weekend, which we did not necessarily anticipate, but some of the trash was a little higher than, than we remembered it being. So we did have someone on the hillside knocking it down, and people on the ground picking it up, and painters, and people removing bushes and invasive species, and I think we had somewhere around 25 people show up Saturday morning to volunteer for this, eight of which were children, which is always very encouraging to me. We will always find, if you bring a child to one of our projects, we will always find something for them to do. I think that we are cultivating the next generation of public servants, and I love seeing children. Assistant manager Emily Mozzarelli was there and brought her children, and they were very great at priming the wall on Saturday, and they were very, very excited for future painting projects, so I have assured them I will let them know when we are doing more. Like I said, about 25 people on Saturday, we ended up with about a dozen more showed up on Sunday for finishing up the project, and we have already prepped our next project, which is going to be doing some of that color block painting on the bridge pillars under the Don Knotts Bridge. So we will be working there in a couple of weeks. We already got the trash cleaned up, we already got the vines pulled down, we're ready to go for just painting. So I'm sure Mila and Violet will be super excited when I, when I give them a call, and this time, they get purple and yellow instead of just white. On Thursday, from 6 to 8 p.m., Chris Haddix will be performing for the Bow Park Summer Concert Series at Wiles Hill Community Park. And our last summer, Ruby Summer Concert of the season happens Friday at 7:00. That will be Maddie and Tay, a country music duo, and that starts at 7:00 and will be followed up by fireworks to close out the season. So it's been a very good, I've heard a lot of lovely things. I did not make it to quite as many concerts this season as I usually do, but I definitely try to swing in anytime I'm around, which, as a reminder to council and staff, I will be virtual for the next meeting. It will be my turn to be, to be out of town, as Counselor Hollings said, is now, and I'm grateful to Deputy Mayor Butcher, who I will, I will call in, but as you can guess, it is probably incredibly difficult to run a meeting virtually, so I will be handing the gavel to Deputy Mayor Butcher to lead that meeting for us.
I have one other question.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else, so.
I was wondering, at H3, at one point, there was going to be some addition to the day room, and I was wondering if there was any progress on that in the hopes that that might help with something with the warming, with the warming shelter.
I think in future years, there has been movement on that. So H3 is currently the recipient of two different congressionally-directed spending projects. One will be a lot of outside work and renovation of the lobby. That is going out to bid by mid-September. All of the paperwork for that is done. And the other one is a smaller grant, but it is, in addition to the day room, it should at least double the size of the day room. That is anticipated to start late fall and be ready for next, next summer. So next season for warming shelter, that would be an option.
For the day portion.
And I think the estimate, and things are always subject to change, but the estimate was there would be room for maybe 20, if, if we go by Fire Marshal Square footage, for sleeping, I think there would be room for maybe 20 people in that. But certainly not for this season, those, those CDS grants with being up in the air for a while, and then all of the, all of the red tape and paperwork, both of those projects are about to be bid, though, so.
Thank you. One less piece of the puzzle to work with for this year.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a nightmare.
Appreciate all the hard work there.
It's been a nightmare.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, we have no executive session this evening, so we could entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks.